Good afternoon. This is the Committee on Water and Land on its hearing notice for Wednesday, March 20, at 1:00 p.m., and we're in room 229. And there, on the first agenda, these are measures that were deferred. And so we'll be making decisions at the first agenda item of the water land, which dates the 1:00 p.m. agenda. So just to let you know that on Zoom land, there are no testimonies that will be accepted for the decision-making period unless any of the committee members may want to ask questions of the advocates of this, any item on the deferred measure as well. And the contact on the content of this hearing can be found on our legislature's website. The live video stream and archive of the hearing is on the Senate's YouTube channel as well. We do have quorum. So thank you so much, members. We will be taking our deferred measure, and then later we'll continue on with the measure before us as well. Deferred Measure HB 1581, House Draft 1, and this is relating to wildfire prevention. Chair's recommendation on this measure is to pass as is as well. It already has a defective date. Okay? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass unamended House Bill 1581, HD1. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang, aye. Senator McKelvey, yes. Senator Favella is excused. Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. On HB 1781, this is relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. And this measure, members, if you remember, this was establishing the Panneva Community Development District. And these were the items, the items that were on this were debated tremendously during the hearing because it had all those TMKs that we needed clarity on. So the Chair at this time would like to defer this measure.
Good call.
With regards to HB 1923, and I'd like to just preface on 1781 that hopefully we can get some clarity if the introduces of this measure feels like there will be continued discussion, then can be worked out in our community in East Hawaii. HB 1923, HD1, relating to camps. Chair's recommendation is to pass with the amendment that will just defect the date to July 1, 2050. Any discussion on this measure? Senator, yes, Senator Alafonte, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the Senate companion bill, I did vote no from the previous hearing, but in meeting with the Land Use Commission and hearing the change and the provision with this, I'm comfortable with the language and what it attempts to do. So I'll be voting aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further discussions hearing none? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye on HB 1923 with amendments.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 1923, HD1. Of the three members present, Senator Chang, myself, and Chair, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. Thank you. With regards to HB 2261, House Draft 2, and this is relating to historic preservation. And members, we've had so many discussions and in several other committees as well with regards to historic preservation. And in conferring with Chip D. and hearing others as well, I think at this point in time, the questions related to the historic places or built before 1959 is contrary to what's in statute. So we'd like to also put a stall on this until it can get some clarity going forward. So we'll defer this indefinitely. Okay? With regards to HB 2361, this is relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. Chair, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments and will defect the date to July 1, 2050. And we'd like to reflect in the committee report that's on page 2, line 2. The word "may" should be changed to "shall." That was my opinion. We will not make changes to the bill, but we'd like to note in the committee report that other state agencies would benefit from any of the work that HCD, HCDAs assistance and expertise. And we find that HCDAs should render services to assist other state agencies at the discretion of other state agencies. And we've heard that from the director as well. Okay? So measure is to pass with amendments on HB 2361. Any further discussion hearing none? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 2361, HD1. Of the three members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. Thank you. HB 2365, and this was related to TODs or the Transit Oriented Development Planning. And this is, I believe, an administration bill. Chair's recommendation is to pass with the amendments. We'll just be defecting the date to July 1, 2050 for continued discussion. Okay? Any discussions hearing none? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 2365, HD1. Of the three members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. On HB 2467, House Draft 1, and this is relating to the rent credits for demolition and infrastructure costs on public land leases. Chair's recommendation on this measure that we pass with the amendments, which would be just defecting the date to July 1, 2050. And this is an administration's bill as well. Any further discussion hearing none? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 2467, HD1. Of the members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. Thank you. With regards to HB 2471, House Draft 2, relating to inspections on public land. Chair's recommendation on this measure is that we pass with the amendments. I'd like to remove the wording that applies in this bill throughout, removing the reference to revocable permits from the measure. And also on page 5, lines 1 to 12, allowing an inspection to occur, giving the authority to DLNR without notice, I believe is unfair to the less seen. So with that said, any discussions? Hearing none? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 2471, HD2. Of the three members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. With regards to HB 2473, HD2, and this is relating to conservation mitigation programs. A Chair is going to ask for deferment on this measure. This is something new that we haven't dealt with before. And I agree with the intentions of DLNR with regards to the mitigation bank policy. And as noted, it's complicated, and it does require stakeholders' input. And I'd like to say it would be better to work on this during the interim with the department and stakeholders. And I believe more discussions must occur and come up with, at least getting all of us educated. And so with that said, we'll be deferring 2473. HB 2505, House Draft 1, relating to land use. Chair's recommendation on this matter is to pass with the amendments, and we'll be looking at taking on page 3, line 15, we'll be inserting the language that reads excluding the lands that have been approved with a special use permit by the Land Use Commission or the counties. Okay? There was much discussion on this measure as well, and we appreciate the discussions and the recommendations or comments made by the Land Use Commission as well. Okay? Any further discussions hearing none? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 2505, HD1. Of the three members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. Thank you. And I know, Vice Chair, you have to go to another hearing, but we'll, should we? Let's see. We're going on a new agenda. So we'll wait until, we got five, six minutes more. So IT, we will be going into a recess for the Committee on Water and Land and go on to our 1:15 agenda at the appropriate time. Thank you. Good afternoon. The Committees on Water and Land and the Committee on Agriculture and the Environment is on its agenda of 1:15 p.m. Today is Wednesday, March 20. We're in room 229. And thank you, Committee on Agriculture, for helping us complete the journey for RD Day tomorrow. And we thank all of you out there who has been patient with many of us here at the Capitol. We'll proceed with the joint hearing. Item HB 1545, House Draft 2, and this is relating to adaptation pathways planning. And this expands the authority of the state and the counties to develop adaptation pathways, pathways plans to modify and relocate infrastructure away from critically threatened areas to locations outside the sea level rise and coastal flooding exposure areas. DLNR, Michael? Okay, you're not Michael today. You are Ryan today. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chair, Members of the Committees. Ryan Hanakoli, Department of Land and Natural Resources. DLNR stands on its written testimony in support of this measure and is here for any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay? Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Morning, Chairs and Members. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development is very pleased to strongly support this measure. This is exactly what I think the legislature had in mind when you created the State Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. This is the next step. It's a step that Officer Planning does through planning. DLNR is able to do through, you know, more specific planning and regulatory efforts. And so I'm very pleased that this bill is coming before you and urge your support for it.
And members, feel free, both committees, if you have questions with regards to the speaker who's up front, feel free to raise your hands. Let us know as well. Okay? Leah Laramie from the Climate Change Commission, sends communication in support. Charles Fletcher, University of Hawaii, sends communication in support. Chair Alice Lee, I believe, County of Maui, County Council, sends communication in support. And Lauren Bickley, you're on Zoom, IT?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. She did send communication in support. Jacqueline Ambrose in support. Jackie Keith sending with comments. Glenn Kagamira in support. Dwayne Fisher and Eric Robinson with comments. And Daniel Amato in support. Is there anyone wishing to speak to? HB 1545, please come up, or we will say aloha to that. We'll proceed with HB 1840, House Draft 2, and this is relating to the environment. This appropriates funds to DLNR to support long-term water quality monitoring and pollution source detection. Okay. Who's testifying for DLNR today?
I'm feeling pretty good today on this one as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Ryan Hanakoli, Department of Land and Natural Resources. DLNR stands on its testimony in support of this measure and is here to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Okay? Nahalani Parsons.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Nahalani Parsons here on behalf of Care for Ina Now Coalition, testifying in support of this measure. Just wanted to share with the Committee that our coalition includes 48 organizations that are part of our members in support of this measure. So thank you to the Committee for hearing you. Available if you have questions.
Thank you. You're also, Doreen Shin. Is she going to be?
No, she's on.
Okay. Doreen? All right. Proceed.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs.
You're with Care for Ina Now as well?
Yeah, but technically testifying as an individual, just standing on my testimony in support of this measure.
Okay. Mahalo. Thank you. We do have, let's see, a number of members close to 100. And Chair at this time would like to ask those that I have not called yet, are you here to testify on 1840? Okay. Seeing none and hearing none. On Zoom, IT, anyone interested waiting to speak on HB 1840?
No one present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. Felili Mendoza on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. And members, we did receive well over 100 support and many sending comments as well. Is there anyone else? Members, any questions of this measure?
Chair.
Yes. Senator Richards.
Yeah. Ryan? I don't disagree with monitoring long-term water, but which water?
So this would be statewide. The bill supports a statewide monitoring system. However, the focus is also on the Lahaina offshore area. But I just want to note for the Committees that there is a contract with the Department of Health now to develop testing protocols and to do monitoring of the Lahaina waters right now in process. It was in fact executed a couple weeks ago. So it's moving forward, but that is short term. It's, you know, it's by purchase order, so it's a smaller contract. But this is more addressing the long-term.
But are we talking ocean or fresh?
Both.
Seems...
This, right, or I'm talking about the Department of Health. That's including sediment, nearshore, and tissue, fish tissue. That's what's going on now with the Department of Health and the contractor. But this is for offshore, or not offshore, but, you know, nearshore.
Nearshore, this 1840?
Correct.
So, but the way I read it, it's supposed to be statewide?
Yes. So it's for, it's, it provides for biologists on all the major islands.
Okay. But so it's not looking at the water quality of our freshwater coming off the mountains?
So it would be water quality coming off the mountains going into the ocean, I believe. It's general water quality testing. So, sorry, I'm getting them confused, the DOH and this, but it's for...
Let me, the reason I'm asking is because when you say we're going to test water quality, we're in island state surrounded by lots of water that have a lot of water coming off. And I support the intent, but I, the scope could potentially be huge. And that's why I'm asking for a little bit more details.
Okay.
Okay? And so if you don't have them, that's fine right now. And Chair, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but...
No problem, Senator. I was going to ask the same question because I think during our briefings with regards to the Lahaina issue and many of the other agencies that are doing the work, we did, we were noticed that Department of Health was doing exactly what you were asking of. And the answer from Ryan was that it's an ongoing. So I, I have the same question.
Just to clarify, so the scope of work for the aquatic biologist would be for both, you know, ocean and fresh in 1840.
Okay. It just, there's no details here. And I don't know how big this could be and how expensive it could be. It's not that I don't support it because I do. I actually worked on getting a bill last year to look at the nearshore waters as it pertains to sewage. And so I like the idea, but it's very, it's lacking a lot of details.
I would also like to note that this is, long-term water quality monitoring is not, it's not a thing right now. Typically, that's done in a responsive, event response type situation. So this is...
If you could get some of the details fleshed out, deliver it to Chair so they can send it out. Conceptually, I'm going to support it, but it'll probably be with reservations because there's not enough meat here to understand. So thank you, Chair.
Any further discussions on HB 1840? Okay. Thank you so much, Ryan. Hearing none. Let's proceed then with HB 2690. And this is relating to water. And this, for Part 1, this establishes a VI policy coordinator and other positions within DLNR for coordination of the Red Hill VI initiatives. It creates the Red Hill Remediation Special Fund. It declares the general fund expenditure ceiling is exceeded. It appropriates funds. And let me say that we are looking at the proposed SD1 before us. This is Part 2. This repeals the position of the deputy to chairperson of the commission. It amends the composition of the commission and administratively attaches it to DLNR. It also establishes fines for certain water use offenses. This takes effect July 1, 2050 in this proposed SD1. Before that, Members, let me offer exactly for transparency sake as well as the continued discussion that we will receive from the testifiers before us today with regards to this measure in particular because it's an SD1 and the public has received it last night. And so just for our continued discussion, let me go on to say some of the language which I already added on the part with regards to the bill itself. However, I have a memo that we received today or last evening where I worked on this request from the Attorney General as well and in looking at the items and a communication we received from the Attorney General. Okay? My staff and I and my communication with my colleagues in the Senate who are attorneys as well. It is of my opinion that the proposed SD1 for HB 2960 is...
2960?
2960, 2690. I'm sorry. The SD1 is constitutional with the objections of what the Attorney General is saying because the title of the House Bill 2690 is relating to water. And both parts of the proposed Senate District, I mean Senate District, SD1 clearly fits within the subject. According to the Attorney General's opinion, number 22-01, on the standard of germaneness of bill amendments under Article 111, Section 15 of the Hawaii State Constitution, an amendment to a bill is germane if the amended bill retains a common tie or close alliance to the bill as it stood before the amendment. Furthermore, the public clearly wants the policies that were outlined in Senate Bill 3327 relating to the Commission on Water Resources, which were incorporated into this measure as we have to date. HB 2260, proposed Senate Draft 1, retains all the original content from HB 2960, House Draft 2, regarding the Red Hill V Policy Coordinator position, which will be established within the Commission on Water Resource Management. It retains from SB 3327 that was heard previously, repeals the position of the deputy to the chairperson of the commission and establishes the position of the executive director of the commission. It makes independent commission of Water Resource Management from DLNR as only an attached agency. It includes fines for water code violations. However, we will be lowering the fines from $60,000 to $25,000 as was recommended by the counties that oversee the water departments in their respective agencies and one of the recommendations made by DLNR in our previous communication. Everything we took out is addressing the Attorney General's opinions from previous SB 3327 hearings. However, this measure before us, we will be amending the bill to reincorporate seaworm's ability to declare a water emergency and retain emergency powers as well as giving seaworm the ability to hire outside counsel at the request of the commission. So if anyone who has sent testimonies before, but only on the House draft and that not on the proposed SD1, please feel free to come and make your comments heard as well, or definitely, and those on Zoom, to address the issue with regards to your communications in testimony. Okay? So having said that, let's continue on is relating to the measure itself. We have before us DLNR. Kate Don Chang.
Aloha, Members. Aloha Chair and Vice Chairs of the Committee. Don Chang, Chair of both the Department of Land and Natural Resources and the Commission on Water Resource Management. We strongly support Part 1 of the bill, which is to establish the VI coordinator. This is an outcome of the coordinated effort between the state and the counties to establish a... to establish a, an implementation plan for the Red Hill Special, for the Red Hill remediation. It establishes a fund and it establishes positions of the Y policy coordinator within the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Just for clarification, the Y coordinator is not within the Commission on Water Resource Management. It is within the Department of Land and Natural Resources. So, um, there is part one of the bill, the Y coordinator. There was no role for SeaWorm other than to play, to be part of the coordination, but the positions will be out of the Chair's office in the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Part two of this measure, as Chair Illinois said, it does, it is essentially the same as SB thirty-three twenty-seven. And I think we have, we have identified portions of the bill that we support and portions that we oppose. I do support, I will say for the record, I do support that the first deputy should be an executive director for purposes of, of institutional knowledge, of, of retaining some, some continuity with the department. I support the fact that the executive, that the first deputy now become the executive director that is subject to accountability to the Water Commission. I have no objections to that. However, I do oppose that the Water Commission would be administratively attached to DLNR. It would be treated like the commission, like the Koholavie Island Reserve Commission as well as the Mauna Kea Authority. They will not be connected to DLNR. And if we're really looking at a Makamakai, um, holistic management of our lands, we cannot do that without the ability of incorporating and integrating both water and land as part of DLNR. I think DLNR is very cognizant of the fact that the Water Commission has, has authority over all matters relating to water and they have primary jurisdiction of that. We do have an opposition to having the chairperson be a volunteer member that sits on the commission. It is a full, I mean, sit being the chairperson of the commission is not, it is very difficult for one who's, who gets paid for the job. But to have a volunteer member be the, be the chairperson would be an unreasonable expectation and responsibility on a volunteer member. So for those reasons, and, um, we do support the establishment of the fine being increased, one-seventy-four C. This is Section twelve. It was subject to, um, consultation with the various directors of water department who were comfortable, well, based upon that discussion, we reduced the fine to twenty-five thousand dollars. We also support, um, the one-seventy-four C dash sixty-two, uh, providing emergency powers to the Water Commission. Uh, we think that that would have been, it would have helped in situations like Red Hill as well as the Lahaina fires. So with that being said, I appreciate the opportunity to provide this testimony and I'm, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Yeah. Why don't you remain Chair?
Yeah.
We, we have some questions or discussions, but I need to ask, is the Attorney General represented today? Okay, can you, maybe you can remain?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So having said that, what you've heard, uh, in our opinions, um, I was, uh, your comments today.
Good afternoon, Chair Illinois, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chairs and Members of the respective committee. My name is Daniel Morris. I'm a Deputy Attorney General. Um, and we did submit testimony on this bill opposing the proposed Senate Draft One. And the basis for that opposition is the germaneness issue, which you have correctly articulated in your initial comments. And, and I want to also say that I agree with you that both Parts One and Part Two do fall within the scope of the title of this bill relating to water. There's really no question about that. But the Attorney General opinion that you mentioned from two thousand, uh, twenty-twenty-two, Attorney General Opinion twenty-two oh one, articulated really a two-part test that comes from that League of Women Voters case. And the first part of that test talks about, does it fall within the scope of the title? And I think it does. I think that part of the test is satisfied, so that would be fine. But the second part of the test asks whether there is a fundamental change in sort of the purpose of the bill. And that second part of the test also has to be satisfied for a bill to, to, to be germane or for amendments to a bill to be germane. And that's where the Attorney General has identified a concern with this bill and believes that it is not germane. And I think the, you know, there's really no, uh, definite way of interpreting germaneness. You know, the case that, that brought that up, the League of Women Voters case used some of the phrases you talked about, common ties and close alliance.
And it was pretty vague, so that's why there's the confusion of the, of, of the, the opinion as well. But that can be tested future.
Correct. And I think that, um, what the opinion tried to emphasize was, was that when you have new and independent matters that are dissimilar or discordant, and again, those are words with meanings that are subject to interpretation. But when we looked at this bill and the original purpose of the bill being confined to the Red Hill issue or remediation of the impacts of fuel on the water supply, felt that the SeaWorm amendments to the structure of SeaWorm, the imposition of penalties and the composition of the SeaWorm Commission, changing that was a fundamental change to what the original purpose of the bill was. So even though it falls within the title, um, the Attorney General's opinion is that that does create a fundamental change and would subject the bill to a, to a legal challenge.
Okay, we'll take it at one point in time. However, I have a question and, and Chair with regards to hiring of an attorney. And I think that was also an objection to your office, um, outside attorney. Chair Chang, um, any of the agencies within DLNR, I have an opportunity by statute to hire outside attorneys?
Any agency with?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Any other agency, I understand they are, several agencies have the opportunity to hire. That was approved, any statute. Do you know who they are?
Um, I do know some state agencies have, uh, independent counsel, but I'm not sure which, which ones.
Okay.
I think Department of Homeland says.
Yeah, so there's, there's, it, it has worked, I mean, at times of importance, uh, in times of the need. Now, with regards to the Lahaina fire and the Attorney General's findings that are incomplete at this point, because I think your, your report one is already out to the public or incomplete. You know, the report of the Attorney General's, um, findings of the Lahaina fire. Now, I understand in our discussions during one of the hearings, the AG has hired an outside company to help with planning of the agency's research as to how the fire happened and so, and, but you're doing that, right?
No, there is a precedent for the AG using outside counsel.
Yeah, so she can do that, but no other person, uh, agency can without approval by the legislature. If the legislature, that's why there are some agencies that already has the ability to have an independent counsel. Anyway, um, I, I just wanted to kind of make clear and see if any of our DLNR agencies had the opportunity to have an independent counsel. Now, in, in our research, in the use of an independent counsel that could be available or have been available to some agencies as well, um, I, I believe that those hiring of a personal independent attorney, uh, representing an issue, it's not going to happen every day. It's not going to happen every year. It's going to happen in terms, I'm sure, of emergencies as well. And we never know in our lifetime when an emergency will occur. And with, in particular, our opinion and the recommendations from the reports that we've seen by the Commission on Water Resources dated nineteen seventy-nine to Governor Arioshie and to the nineteen ninety-four, uh, opinion from SeaWorm Commission at that time to the Senate President and to the Speaker of the House, that it's about time that the Commission on Water Resources be independent and have their own authority. So, um, that's, that's, that's my opinion. And the opinion that this measure has passed the Senate a hundred percent, twenty-five votes before it passes over to the House. Uh, and it seems like, um, I think that's the reason why I have put back into retaining, um, an independent counsel on this measure. So I just wanted to share that. Now that we have the both here, any questions to the Chair or the Attorney General, Senator Alafanti?
Yeah, just one question for the Attorney General. Thank you for, um, sharing your thoughts and feedback. So is the opposition only on part two, what you're okay with part one of the proposed SD?
That's correct. Our, our testimony is limited to that portion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any questions of the Attorney General or, uh, Senator Rhodes?
I do have one for Chair Chang. With regard to the, um, penalties for water violations, you, I think the bill originally had said fifty or sixty.
Sixty thousand.
And it, but it's up to sixty thousand dollars, right?
That was the original bill. We amended down to, up to twenty-five thousand.
So why did you want to lower it? Since it's up to?
I, I think it was because.
Cause you don't, I mean, you, you don't have to, you don't have to impose the highest penalty, correct?
You're absolutely right. I was looking for a.
Can you point, yes, just, yes, thank you.
So thank you for the question. It really was, um, last year, the governor had vetoed the bill after he'd come out of session and had passed. Um, and I just felt it was appropriate that I should talk to, because my understanding, the veto was, part of the veto was based upon concerns raised by the various water departments. So I spoke to various, the water department directors who felt that they didn't have an objection necessarily to increasing the fine. They just felt the fine that could go up to sixty thousand dollars, they didn't feel like it was justified, but they were more willing to accept twenty-five thousand, which was what we originally had when we introduced.
I understand that you can't speak for them, but I don't understand why they would care. If it's up to, it just gives them more authority than they would have otherwise. So I, I don't, I don't understand why you'd want to lower it.
I, I was more looking for a compromise to give us more than five thousand because I wasn't sure if they would support the measure if it was just, if we kept in the sixty because that was vetoed last year. So this was more a compromise to salvage a bill that would give us an additional tool for enforcement.
Yeah, so thank you. Thanks, Chair. I mean, five thou, five thousand is kind of a joke, so thanks.
Uh, and, and we also have Ernie Lau here from the Board of Water Supply here. We can ask him as well. Any further questions of the Chair or the Attorney General? Thank you so much for your presence here.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll continue on then, um, with, uh, Ernie Lau, Board of Water Supply. Aloha, and thank you for your patience. I know you're just as busy as we all are, so we'll move you up front.
Oh, oh, thank you, Chair. Aloha, Ernie Lau, Manager for the Board of Water Supply. Uh, thank you, Chairs Gabbard and Annoi and the committee members. Aloha. We support the proposed changes to SD one. I'll go over the, I guess, the first part of it is creation of the Y policy coordinator, special fund, the staffing and the budget for that. I think it's very important that the, everybody understands this. So recovering from the damages done to the Ina and to the Vi because of Navy's Red Hill facility will take decades to happen. And it's, it's important that we stay focused and we keep that effort strong and focused and also pursue recovery of costs from federal sector. Uh, so the special fund will be very important. On, uh, sorry, fully support part two, part one. On part two, I'll just want to, I just want to start and say that I enjoy working with Chair Chang. It's, she's very collaborative, uh, communication is flowing very well between us and the county water departments and the Chair. Uh, and we think that through this collaboration, a lot can be accomplished. However, I kind of stepped back and initially I had, um, concerns about creation of an executive director. I know when you brought up that bill, when I sat in that first hearing on the other measure that I brought up the idea of an executive director, uh, not a deputy appointed, um, by the commission, but actually under Chair, the Chairperson. It, it brought to mind what happened over ninety-five years ago with the city county of Honolulu. Before this state was a, a state, it was still a territory. At that time, water, uh, artesian wells are being drilled and it was out of control and the water resources was at risk of, of being destroyed. So the territorial legislature at the time, the predecessor to this esteemed body, decided that we had, they had to take an action that was contrary to the will of the city government at the time, which was totally in control of water, uh, that they had to create something that was not directly under, uh, under the mayor or the council or the commission at the time. And the idea was to take politics out of decisions that are vital to our community and water is life. So they made that move. And I would say, and I, I admire what they did and the courage they had almost a hundred years ago. Because they realized that water was so important to our community for all of our lives, for the environment, that they, they said they had to create a, a model that would make decisions based on science, uh, respect for our culture, uphold the mandates of our constitution, treating this water resource as a trust resource. Uh, so they, they did something very courageous almost a hundred years ago. They decided that the Board of Water Supply had to be independent, had to be under a board like the Water Commission, uh, that is made up primarily of community members with two ex-official members. And they would hire the manager, in this case, the executive director for the commission, and they would make decisions that are in the best interest of our community, uh, free of, of, of political influence. I just want to use as an example, and it's not a statement against the current mayor. He fully supports me on my efforts on Red Hill. But I can look back ten years ago, if I was not, uh, part of a semi-autonomous agency that was independent of as much as possible politics, that I couldn't have taken the hard stand I did on Red Hill for our community, protect our Vi. So I think what you have before you, and water seems to be a central focus of our state that involves multiple counties, multiple islands, and it's an issue that it is going to be vital to our future, that the decisions related to water need to be independent. And out of respect for Chair Chang, it's not a statement against her, but I can see for the long term, a hundred years from now, that we're going to look back and say, that was the right decision to make for the good of our community. The way the Board of Water Supply is structured, let's do the same with the commission. Board of Water Supply is a user of this resource. We're not part of the regulator, a regulators' commission. That's with the regulators. DLNR is both a user and regulator. And I think the commission needs to be, uh, unbiased and objective in its decisions and base it on science and, and data. So my two cents is I fully support the creation of executive director. I thank, uh, thank the Chair, Chair Annoi and Chair Gabbard for your courage in putting this forth for discussion. We are at a critical crossroads, crossroads for our community when it comes to water. With the challenges of climate change before us, that future is so uncertain. We need to make decisions based on science. We need to make decisions that respects our culture and our community and is in the best interest of all the people of Hawaii. Aloha.
Can you answer the question that Senator Rhodes had asked of Chair Chang with regards to the?
The penalties? Yeah, and I, I, I stayed silent as the bill progressed through the session. I did deliberately, I did that, uh, respecting the desires of DLNR. But the idea of going from where it was to go to sixty thousand in just one fell swoop was a kind of a drastic change. So twenty-five was like an interim, but with the possibility that with more further discussion and creation of a clear process in administering the fines and a process to appeal fines, um, that would, you know, I, I would be open to even increasing in the future. I can see the reason for the increase. Twenty-five is like an interim step toward maybe sixty in, in the future. It's, it's people got to pay attention. Uh, and the, the county water departments, you know, we're not perfect, uh, but we are doing our best to uphold. to uphold the requirements under the Commission. But there are maybe some users that totally ignore the Water Commission. And having served as a deputy there, our Commission needs the teeth to do their job. But I also would put in the plea for resources. That has been a perpetual problem from when I served on the Commission 20 years ago, not getting the resources to take on a large and important mission for our state.
Thank you so much. Any questions of Mr. Lau? Okay, having said that, thank you so much for your patience and appreciated. Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. My name is Kate Purielitz. I'm the Director of Advocacy with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand in support of both parts. I do want to just highlight a couple of things, as well as, we do request an amendment. For part one, we do support the intent of that part, and just want to sort of make the comment that we do intend and expect that the, the federal government will be providing the financial resources that are required for remediation, but we support that central coordinated function. For part two, we also support the creation of a, or the establishment of the executive director position. We believe that that's one way to further insulate a very important position from political influence. We also want to mention that, as you consider moving the bill forward, there may be room to strengthen the, essentially, the minimum requirements or the qualifications for that executive director to ensure that the breadth of experience that is needed for that position is included and at all, at all times be considered by the Commission. We also support the increase in fines. We agree that the $5,000 is too low, and we're willing to, $25,000 is a very good start, specifically with clarification that it is a daily violation. And I think that's an important clarification that we truly appreciate. The amendment we are asking for is to add the Office of Hawaiian Affairs as, having the ability to appoint a member to the nominating committee. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs advocated very strongly for the, the, one of the Commission positions to be, to be, having the, the knowledge of traditional native Hawaiian customs practices and water, water resource management. And so we feel that it is, it is time for us to be a part of the nominating committee so that we can ensure that, that the things that we have advocated for are present on the Commission. You know, thank you, Chair, for, for sharing the amendments that you are proposing. We also support having, allowing the Commission to have independent legal services. And we do want to mention that we do have concerns about having an emergency period for one year, seems like a very lengthy amount of time to be calling an emergency. And so we just want to make sure that there are some guardrails as far as what it takes to continue an emergency, which is not to say you couldn't sort of have a continuing emergency like we see with the emergency proclamations from the governor, that you could renew it every 30, 45, 90 days, something like that. But we do, we are concerned about the length of time in the prior amendments from the other bill. I'm here to answer any questions, and I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions of OHA? Okay, thank you. Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club, you're on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. This is Wayne Tanaka with the Circle of Hawaii. We submitted written testimony on the HD, but, you know, I, you know, I'd like to take a few moments just to speak to the proposed SD1. We strongly support the SD1 proposed draft, along with the moments, Chair, that you described at the beginning of the. Did you want to talk about the germaneness issue? You know, in the Legal Women Voters Act 84, that was hugely distinguishable. In that case, the bill was originally about recidivism and the criminal justice system, and it was completely gutted and replaced to be about hurricane shelters, right? So it's completely different. Here, we have a bill that dealt with, and still deals with, the consequences of the lack of political will in state government to uphold the public trust in water, you know, our most precious resource. And so, you know, this bill is about water, it's about addressing the harms of political influence over our water. And as we've seen at Red Hill, in East Maui, in Nauvaiha, Molokai Ranch, and in Lahaina, you know, in so many places, the political control of water, you know, has upended the public trust, has also placed our future food security and our water security and our cultural integrity, our ecological integrity, our climate resilience, places all at risk of never being realized. And so we really need these provisions to insulate our water from political influence. It has to be done now, and not in another 10 years or 20 or 30 years. You know, I think, you know, only other suggestion we might have would be to place the water policy, the Y policy coordinator, sorry, maybe in the office of the executive director of the Commission, just because of the benefits that political insulation would give to that person's work as well. And, yeah, I do also, you know, want to acknowledge and, and support the Office of Hawaiian Affairs' request to be a part of the nominating committee for the Commission, given the unique Hawaiian rights associated with our water resources and underwater. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much, and we support this measure.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate that. Kivacilis Hermos, University of Hawaii, sends communication in support. Louis Salavaria, Budget and Finance, sends communication in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. The Alliance for Progressive Actions in support. Chamber of Sustainable Converses sends communication in support. Hui O Nauvaiha in support. Kapuna for Mo'opuna in support. Randy Ferreira for the Hawaii HDEA in support as well. The Veterans for Peace, Chapter 113 Hawaii in support. There are many others, totally, about 35, 40 more. Is there anyone here, present, that wishes to speak on HB 2690? Hearing none. Any, those that appear on Zoom? Any IT, anyone waiting to speak on HB 2690?
No one's, no one's present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any questions before we proceed with the next one? Sierra Club, are you still there, Wayne?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You did say you requested one additional thing outside of OHA being on the nominating committee. What was it? Just slipped my mind.
Oh, sorry. It, it was a suggestion to include the Y policy coordinator in part one of the measure to attach them to the office of the executive director of the Commission, as proposed under the part two.
Okay, what position on the Y?
The?
A member of?
So the, 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 part one has the Y policy coordinator to kind of coordinate the implementation of the water alliance initiative. And so we have some, we had some concerns about having to ensure that person is also politically insulated in order to better, you know, protect their mission. And so, given the safeguards that are being proposed in part two, we were thinking it would be, it might help to strengthen the bill to have that policy coordinator within a more politically insulated environment, like with the Water Commission, as proposed in SD.
So is that the position to add on to the nominating committee?
No, no, the nominating.
I didn't understand.
Oh, sorry. So the, the nominating committee issue is to have OHA have a representative. Right now, it's just, I think.
Okay, so, so the position, maybe I'm not getting it right. So the position from the Y goes to what position?
To, to place them.
Participation?
To place them under the Commission on Water Resource Management? If that makes sense? Instead of reporting directly to the Chairperson of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, to put that, that Y policy coordinator under the Commission.
Okay. Do me a favor.
Yes.
We got technology so fast. Can you fastly send to Brad, my committee clerk, some language so the committee can look at it?
Absolutely. Yes, I can do that.
And, Ernie, while you're still here, then maybe if you can kind of strengthen our capability of understanding why a position would be included, if you don't mind, come on up, if it'll help us, or help the policy.
I, I, thank you, Chair. Again, Ernie, from Board of Water Supply. I want to be very careful to how I provide my feedback here, because I respect, I've worked with the Department of Health through multiple administrations for the last 10-plus years on the Red Hill issue. But I can see that they operate strictly what is per the law, current regulations, and they're, they're within that, the confines and constraints of those regulations. The efforts of Red Hill, I think, go beyond that. And if it was left to a purely the regulators, like the Department of Health or EPA, I don't think we're going to get to where we need to get to hold the Navy accountable, to clean up the Ina and the Vi, that we need to have the, this Y policy coordinator out there to be the continued advocate on this issue, even if it's not something that the regulators support. And there may be differences of opinion. Having that regulator, I think, under the Water Commission and under an executive director, I guess, it does provide more insulation from political influence. Although, right now, I think Don, Chair Chang, is completely supportive of the idea that they need to go beyond what just the Health Department and the EPA are doing on Red Hill.
Okay, so what Wayne is, Sierra Club is suggestion, is suggesting?
I, I would support that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
If you wanted to provide further insulation and guarantee that this effort will continue over time, because changes in administration at the state level, and I respect the governors, the various governors that have been involved at Red Hill, there's at least now two, but the changes in governors can also influence the direction and, and effort to hold the military accountable.
Okay, so can you also work with my committee Chair on how we look at the language?
We can take a look at it.
Take, take a look at what Sierra Club is coming up with and forward it to you.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, we'll take a look at it and provide input. Thank you.
Just wanted your recommendations or your expertise, because it's so important to make sure that we understand that when we, hopefully, this passes, that all other unintended consequences, something we left out, we should have added in at this point in time.
Chair, and I'm sorry to continue the discussion, there is one lesson I learned in the last 10 years related to Red Hill. When it first happened back in 2014, we, Erkoata and myself, we went to New Mexico, to Albuquerque, New Mexico, because they were experiencing a major leak of millions of gallons of gas, gasoline into aquifer that they were pumping from. That's from an Air Force base there in Albuquerque. And we met with the, the utility staff, the board members, the state officials, including the environmental management department, Environmental Department of Albuquerque, New Mex, of New Mexico. And we could see over time, the changes in governor, changes in appointees or leadership in that environmental department has kind of waxed strong or weakly on the issue of holding the military accountable to address the contamination issues they created for the utility or the community. So having that insulated from changes in politics or, or political priorities over time would be better than leaving it directly under the influence. Although, I'm, I'm okay leaving it with Don right now, but on the long term, having it more independent is a better move, I think. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Anyone else on Zoom or members, any questions with regards to HB 2690, House Draft Two, and the SD1 before us? Hearing none, then, members, let's move on to, let's see, where are we? Okay, last but not least, oh, that's you, Senator.
Okay.
Yes.
So the next measure is House Bill 2329, HD1, establishing a one-year pilot program to reduce the population of rose-ringed parakeets on Kauai using past research and on-the-ground experience to guide future strategies. First up is Chelsea Arnott from DLNR.
Aloha, Chairs, members of the committee. Chelsea Arnott, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, the department supports this measure, and just want to recognize the damage that these high-density populations of rose-ringed parakeets pose to agricultural areas and tourist locations on Kauai. And we really don't have a lot of management tools, especially in how to manage them in highly populated areas. So again, we support this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. Chair, are we asking questions at the end, or?
You can ask now, that's.
Chelsea, real quick. It referenced the past research. Specifically, what does that mean?
So in 2018, the legislature did appropriate funding to the Department of Land and Natural Resources to conduct research into management options for rose-ringed parakeets, specifically looking into birth control methods. And one of the first steps to be able to do that is to look into different bird feeders that the birds would be attracted to. This was carried out by the USDA Wildlife Services, and that report unfortunately came back with information that the birds on Kauai don't go to bird feeders. They put out multiple options, and the birds just didn't go, weren't attracted to them. So unfortunately, bird feeders aren't a viable option right now on Kauai. I think there's just a lot of fruit to eat, a lot of lychee, a lot of mango, a lot of other things that they are feeding on and aren't going for the bird feeders. But we do have a problem here on Oahu, and it has been anecdotally observed that rose-ringed parakeets do go to bird feeders here on Oahu, so that could be an option here. But we definitely need to look at other options for the management options on Kauai. And that study also did just basic biology, looking at how many roosts there are, the population size, so it's just some of those basic metrics in order to understand what efforts are needed.
Okay, so, not so much employing it, but understanding the problem better to figure out what you might be doing.
It was twofold. And so, yeah, understanding the biology, and there are, the management options that are being utilized the most are choline efforts. So what would be needed in terms of taking out of the population with choline efforts to be effectively managing that? And to understand that, we really need to know what the population is, where those roosts are located, so just that basic information. And roosts change, so that information needs to be ongoing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
In the report, were there other jurisdictions that have had a similar problem with the parakeets and what was used there? They were successful, besides the feeders?
There have, so jurisdictions, are you meaning here in Hawaii?
No, anywhere.
Okay, yes. So in the Canary Islands, they actually have had a successful eradication of rose-ringed parakeets from those islands. The population was relatively small, they didn't get to the numbers that we have here today. And that management option was using pretty much choline efforts. We haven't seen the bird feeders specifically for rose-ringed parakeets with the birth control option, but they have been used to control other types of invasive birds elsewhere.
Thank you. All right, next is Department of Ag. In support, Malani Boon with the Kauai Office of Economic Development. In support, Ryan Miyamoto with the Hawaii Farm Bureau. In support, Kathy Gogel from Animal Rights of Hawaii opposed. And the following are in support, William Chang, Patrick Chi, Olagia Woodson from the Nature Conservancy, Sage Keller, and Marcelo Vito, all in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? And are there any additional questions from the members? No? Okay. Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, let's see. Shall we? Do you want to go to this?
Yes.
How's your car?
Oh, the short one.
Okay, yes, okay. IT, just for a few minutes, we're not going to, going to recess, we're just waiting for a quorum.
Okay, sounds, sounds good.
And for our committee members, we do have a quorum now, but I understand the other two are just waiting for a call in for the votes, so. And Committee on Agriculture needs a quorum. Okay. Excuse me. Chair.
Yep.
Have you talked here that this one? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, both Committees, Committee on Water and Land and the Committee on Agriculture and the Environment is going into decision-making on its agenda before us today with regards to HB 1545. This is relating to adaptation pathways and planning. Chair's recommendation that we pass with the amendment, just defecting the date to July 1st, 2050. Any discussions, Committee on Water and Land or members of the Committee on Agriculture? Hearing none. For the Committee on Water and Land, Vice Chair for the vote with amendments, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 1545, HD Two, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator McKelfie is excused. Senator Favella?
Aye.
Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Same recommendation for AEN, any concerns? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes is excused and Senator Awat is excused. Chair of three in favor, motion is adopted.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. HB 1840, relating to the environment. The Chairs have made recommendation that we defer this indefinitely. I think the measure at this point in time is a little too broad and as earlier discussion, I think we'd like to have a little more discussions on this particular water quality monitoring, which is important as well. And looking forward, I think it, it would be at this point in time, a little too costly. So Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure. On HB 2690? Okay, thanks. Okay, with regards to HB 2690, House Draft Two, proposed SD One, Chair's recommendation is to adopt the proposed SD One with the amendments in both Parts One and Two. And we'll restore the Sea Worm Emergency Power Section as well from SB 3327. We'll be restoring the outside counsel sections for Sea Worm from the SB 3327. We'll replace, we'll, we'll place the Y by policy coordinator position that's identified in, in Part One within the office of the Executive Director of Sea Worm, once the Executive Director is hired, and we'll also include OHA on the nominating committee. Any discussions on these measures? Senator Alafanti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In support, however, I'll be voting with reservations, notwithstanding the fact of your hard work in terms of the Sea Worm bill that passed Madison D., as you mentioned, over to the House, but primarily my reservation specifically has to do with the AG's testimony for Part Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions, the Committee on Water and Land? Yes, Senator Favella?
Yeah, I'm also gonna, I was gonna vote no, but I'll vote with reservations to keep it going, but I have concerns of what Don said and the AG, so I have some issues with the bill, but I guess we can move it along and see how can we work on this. I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you. For the Committee on Water and Land, then Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senator Alafanti for the vote.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments HB 2690, HD Two, noting the reservations from Senator Favella and your Vice Chair. Any other further reservations? Any no votes? Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
And same recommendation for AEN, any concerns?
Chair. Oh, go ahead, Senator Decoy. You first. You go ahead.
Thank you. You know, same here, I still have concerns with the bill, so I'll be voting with reservations and keep moving it along.
Yeah, thank you and Chair, for some of the concerns have been echoed, I will be voting with reservations as well. I do want to keep the conversation going, however.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Thank you for the House Bill 2690, HD Two, SD One. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes with reservations. Senator Decoy?
Reservations?
Senator Rhodes and Awat are excused. Chair you have three in favor, motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. And then the final measure of the agenda, HB 2329 on rose-ringed parakeets. The Chair's recommendation would be to vote, would be to pass as is. Any discussion? Senator Richardson, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, if we could ask, in the committee report that we had a report, come back to the Senate about what they actually are able to find and accomplish.
Great. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Okay, thank you on the matter, HB 2329. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
And Senator Awat is excused. Chair you have four in favor, motion is adopted.
For the Committee on Water and Land, same recommendation on HB 2329, HD One, with, if you see with amendments?
As is.
As is. Unamended. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass unamended HB 2329, HD One, of the four members present. Any no votes or votes of reservations? Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. This concludes a joint hearing on the Water and Land and the Committee on Agriculture and the Environment. Thank you, folks.